Oh, he moved.
All right. We'll call the regular meeting of the April 9, 2013 Municipal Planning Commission to order. I'd like to open it up with the prayer or the pledge by Dr. Warren.
Please bow. Dear heaven and father, we thank you for this day that you've created for us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings of life. Father, we ask that you would guide these many women as they undertake the city's business, that their decisions would be in the best interest of Fairview. Father, we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the approval of the agenda.
The move.
Second. Have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to defer 8.6 on the discussion of the items between City and Fairview. Our illustrious state legislators have put a moratorium on annexing property by a municipality unless that particular property or person wants to be annexed.
Okay.
Is that right, Don?
Yes, sir.
That will be in conflict until 2015, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
From April the 1st.
And then 8.4?
Yes.
We have not seen any conceptual site plan or grading plan as of yet, so we would like to just defer that until we do?
Just totally remove it.
Just totally remove it. Are there any other changes? Get a vote then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number three, our citizens' comments.
There are no citizens' comments in that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kancherov. Item four is the approval of the minutes from March 12, 2013, regular meeting.
No approval.
Second. All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, discussion?
I had a question on... Page four at the top. Mr. Beaud, did you vote on that or abstain?
Let me see here. No, I voted no.
Okay, thank you. That is all.
Any other comments or questions concerning the minutes? If not, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item five is the recommendations for March 2013. Don, you help us with 5.1 and 5.2?
Both 5.1 and 5.2 was passed on first reading at the Board of Commissioners' last meeting last Thursday night.
Item 6.1 and 6.2 are the bonds.
6.1, developers have been notified that the bond will expire May 15. We have been in contact with the bank. They have stated that they will be sending that to us on the... What day did they say?
The day before.
The 14th. 6.2, we've already received that renewal this past week.
All right, thank you. Item 7.1, under Old Business, vacation of lot six from the Evergreen Industrial Park subdivision plat, map 16 parcel 47.27, 6.97 acres, Cassandra K. Fagan owner.
When we last left, you decided to determine whether or not you would place the site back on the agenda for the April meeting. We are here tonight to request that the planning commission grant a variance to the 100% requirement for plat signatures to vacate this parcel. You have the authority within your subdivision regulations to do so. Ms. Fagan has attempted a number of times to contact Mr. Barry Derry to secure that signature. She has the signature of all the other lot owners with the exception of the city lots in order to proceed with vacating this plat. She has had multiple discussions with MTMC for the provision of electricity on the county portion of the property that she owns. It is cost prohibitive for her to do so. So we are respectfully requesting that you entertain a motion or entertain a discussion to vary that 100% requirement. That would not require you to amend your subdivision regulations. And as a planner, I'm reliant to recommending amendments. However, she's done everything within her power to secure that signature from Mr. Barry Derry, and he is noncommunicative in any fashion or any form even to a registered letter sent to him or certified letter sent to him. He has also been noncommunicative to George Dean, who is the attorney that we're working with on this case. And my understanding is that he's also noncommunicative to the city as well. So we are asking that you are within your right to grant her a variance from that 100% requirement for all the signatures so that she can proceed to the rezoning stage for the property.
Ms. Beaud, I just want to clarify. Do you have the 100% signatures required?
No, sir. She has every signature with the exception of Mr. Barry Derry's Tennessee Paving Company property. And of course, the city, the city would have to sign off as well if you're so inclined to grant the variance. But she has secured every other acceptance from the law.
I'd like to hear from Don about this. Do you have any comments?
Do we need to have a motion on the floor first for discussion?
I'll make a motion that we disallow the variance due to the fact that the rules and regulations now state you must have 100% of the signatures on there. And it has been that way ever since it was formed. So without that, my motion would be to decline the variance.
Decline the variance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Do you have anything at all that... I guess my... I don't understand the part that we have the right to be able to grant a variance. That's my...
Tennessee's... I apologize, Don.
Your subdivision regulations are set up just like your zoning ordinance to give variances in certain situations where hardships lie not on the fault of the property owner. And this board or the zoning appeals are given the authority to grant variances in those cases.
I was unaware that we had the right to be able to do that.
It's actually a Tennessee state statute-controlled section of your subdivision regulations.
Can we point an order, please? Okay, I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion of disallowing the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. What extension from Mayor Toney?
Thank you for your time.
Item 7.2, discuss interaction on an application for annexation, property located at 2950 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 9.00, Jerry Carey owner. Is anyone there here to represent the property owner?
Make motion for approval.
I got a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you.
You got four seconds.
You got four seconds? Is...
You get either.
I would love you to. I'd like to welcome... Well, it sounds like we're going to welcome you as a new member of our city.
Yeah, I've lived in that same house for 28 years. I've had four different addresses in the county, and so I just thought I'd move it into the city. You know, that got me much more...
Nice round of applause.
Well, welcome.
Well, let's get a vote in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, sir, and welcome to the city. Item 7.3 is discuss interaction on an application for annexation, property located at 2931 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 79.00, Russell Spicer owner. The property owner's here?
Spicer's here. I believe that Stuart Johnson was going to represent him tonight. I'm not certain.
He... Well, he's outside.
Can you...
Ask him if he's going to represent him.
He's supposed to represent me.
That's fine. We'll give him a little bit of time. Do you want to move to the next gentleman? Is it possible to go to 7.4?
I guess they can say representative. Is a representative permissible, or the owner is to be present?
It's owner and/or representative of the property.
They can have agents.
You can always have a representative representative.
By the ordinance, it has to be the person in interest or their agent.
I'm here.
Please come forward.
So can I have a motion for approval? Or move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got one correction to be made on it. On the second page over there, it shows... My glasses on, I can read more things. The address on the second page drawn up by M.T. Taylor Jr., Attorney at Law, shows the address at 2131 Fairview Boulevard, and that's incorrect. The correct address is 2931 Fairview Boulevard.
Okay, so it is the address that is noted on the agenda tonight?
On the request form, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. On the application form, it says, "Does this property but city property?" It's circled no. We can annex property that doesn't but city property. In looking at the map of the area, I believe it does but city property. I believe that to be in error.
That would be at Highway 100, the roadway to not...
And if that's an error, it needs to be corrected to say yes.
Does that correction need to happen before we can annex it in, or can we annex it in with a contingency?
No, you can correct.
He authorized me to make both the corrections tonight, and if he didn't realize the roadway counted as property when he did, I'd have to...
You can correct it if you're authorized. We'll just change the no to yes, and then we can go. But the statute does not allow you to... Anex property that's not adjacent to city property.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so it appears that we've got everything in order now. Could I have a... Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
In a second, so can we get a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Item 7.4, discuss interaction on an application for annexation, property located at 2980 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 4.00, Eldridge Sexton owner. Any owner or representative here tonight?
They have proper notification done.
This is the second time we've been through this. Motion to defer.
I'll make a motion to defer 7.4.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you'll just make a motion to withdraw it from the agenda that way, I'll send them a letter, ask them if they want to proceed, and if they do not, then it won't be a deferred item just hanging out there still. I'll just put it back on the agenda if they want to proceed.
I'll retract my motion for acceptance and make a motion that we delete 7.4 off the agenda.
Can we do that after the approval of the agenda?
Yes, because you're dealing with it as you get to it. You can defer it or in the absence of the person being there, if there's something technically wrong with it, you can withdraw it.
Okay, so we have a motion for withdrawal? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 7.5, discuss interaction on site plan for a parking lot located at 1365 Fairview Boulevard, map 23L, group B, parcel 12, zone CG, Nordeale III LP owner. Do we have a representative from the property owner?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I'd like to get the engineer's comments first.
If T-DOT permits have not yet been obtained, any planning commission approval should be contingent upon T-DOT's permit being obtained. The proposed driving aisle adjacent to the parking lot is 1321. The required width indicated in the zoning ordinance is 15 feet. The advocate is requesting to proceed with a 13-foot drive aisle with due and physical site limitations. From a functional standpoint, the proposed 13-foot width is feasible, but the planning commission should note that it would be varied from what is required in the zoning ordinance. Please note, there is not a radius indicated at the intersection of the proposed new drive in Fairview Boulevard. Typically, a 20-foot radius would be required. However, due to the nature of the drive aisle, one-way exit, the radius is purposely being omitted in an effort to discourage vehicular traffic from entering the one-way aisle.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
I have a second? Second. Okay. We got a discussion on the matter. Anybody have any specific questions or comments?
Has the T-DOT permits been obtained?
They have been submitted, and any moment, we should have their approval. The revised site plan, that is the revised site plan, has all comments from T-DOT addressed. So that's got the city comments and T-DOT comments.
Okay.
They just had a couple...
Contingent?
The head balls on each end and a few other minor comments. So they've all been addressed, so we should have their approval within hours or days.
I'll revise my motion to be contingent upon T-DOT's permit being obtained.
Okay, person that gave the second? We get a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. When we first looked at the plans, we also looked at an extruded curb. Has that been included?
Yes.
And all the notes that we had from staff review have been done? Any further comments or questions?
Has anyone else driven that... driven out there and actually tried to take a left turn where the clients and staff would be taking a left turn onto Highway 100?
I have.
How did you proceed that?
It's far. It's close to 400 feet of site distance each direction.
And when the shrubbery that's recommended exists, will that in any way obstruct?
No, those are going to be dwarfed.
Low so you can see it with the top easily, even in a garden.
Would it be challenging to your business if, at some point in the next five years or longer, we have a need to widen the road?
T-DOT stated that if they take it out, they'll take it out on the inside, not the outside.
Would you... Let's... I'd like to clarify inside and outside. You're talking about the radius of the curve at the highway.
Right. And they said if they clip it out, they take it out on the inside, not the outside. I spoke with the director of planning, assistant director, or say, for T-DOT. Did you have a chance?
Yes. Ms. Beaud, those are all great questions, and if this site was located on a city street, all of those questions would be certainly addressed by city staff. Since it is located on a T-DOT highway, part of their permit review process will review every one of those questions that you just asked specifically for the concerns that you have. So they have... T-DOT has full authority to permit or disallow driveway entrances into and off of their highway. And so that's why I stated in my comments was we want to make sure that your approval tonight would be contingent upon them approving whatever permit process they have for that driveway access. And then also, again, since it is a T-DOT highway, any widening in the future would be at T-DOT's discretion. And so they... We are not currently aware of any additional right-of-way they've purchased in this area. So again, part of their permit review process would be to look internally within their organization to say, "Are we going to widen at some point in the future?" And then they would adjust their permit approvals based on whatever they think they were going to do, you know, down the line, so... But all certainly very good considerations to keep in mind for a site such as this.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, then we have a motion on the floor. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering about city water and if that should go out that far. How would that be affected?
As most of you may or may not know, the city water and sewer is owned and operated by Water Authority of Dixon County. So they are requested to meet with us every month in our staff review. They are sent an invitation to come and look at the plans of what's going on and provide any insight or comments that they see fit that would be applicable to their infrastructure. And Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they've... They haven't indicated any issues with this particular site that I'm aware of.
They haven't, and of course, water is already out there, and we... There is a water service line that comes up with Boyle Hill 12 inches from Harford Valley that comes up through there, that comes back through this part of the city. So water is already there, and they haven't... Water Authority hasn't indicated any upgrades on any lines out there.
Okay. So we have a motion for approval? All those in favor? With contingent on the T-DOT permits, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8.1 is the... Under New Business is the final subdivision plat for 12 lots in the Heartland Reserve subdivision, map 18, parcel 55.01, 7.63 acres, R20 zoning, Heartland Reserve Incorporated owner. Do we have a representative here? And Mr. Commissioner Benson will read the engineer's report.
A note should be added to the plat that clearly states who is responsible for all required maintenance and upkeep of the stormwater detention basin located on Lot 14, such that it operates in accordance with the intended purpose and design. Furthermore, the following excerpt in Section 4.113.205 of the subdivision regulations applies, and I quote, "All ponds shall be fenced for safety and shall be landscaped in accordance with applicable regulations. All detention facilities shall be... shall provide adequate access for maintenance. Maintenance shall be in the perpetual responsibility of the property owner or association and shall not be assigned to the city. A maintenance document describing the frequency of maintenance, scope of maintenance, and responsibility for maintenance shall be submitted to the city and shall be reported as a part of the plat. It does not appear as though the proposed cul-de-sacs..."
Street name.
"...that street has a name. The name for this street should be included in the plat."
Mr. Chairman, the first note, and we already did mention it to you before you create your report, they were approved under the old subdivision regulations before this was... the detention areas were required to have fences. So this is a final plat that should match the subdivision regulations that they were approved under.
So you sent everything on your qualifies already?
Well, the requirement of it being fenced isn't a requirement in the previous subdivision regulations. So I don't know that we can require him to put a fence around a detention pond when he was approved under the previous subdivision regulations.
Doesn't the street name have to be approved by the emergency manager?
There already is a citation court.
Okay. It took us like a year to get a name.
Citation what?
Court.
Can we still suggest that a fence be around an open pond in a residential subdivision?
You can suggest it, yes, ma'am.
If it was approved about it, you can't require it. If it was under the old regulations, if it didn't require it, you can't require it. You can suggest it.
Detention pond.
Okay. In the engineer report... Where are we? Do we need a motion?
May for approval.
Second. Now we can talk.
Thank you. In the engineering report, Will, you're saying a note should be added that clearly states who is responsible. Are you intending for that entire verbiage in italics where it says, "Open ponds shall be fenced," to be part of our motion?
Based on Don's...
Yes, we can request.
...revelation tonight, then I don't... I don't know that that whole Statement 1 is even applicable. If any of that was not found in the prior subdivision regulations, then I'm not... I have not had a chance to study the prior subdivision regulations as it pertains to this specific item. So I'm not certain as to any or all of those statements would apply under those prior subregs.
Okay, at this point, so your recommendation on item 8.1 is inconclusive, and do you feel like you've given us a direct understanding from the engineering, or do we need to allow you to look at item 8.1 for that fully engineer report to be given to us as the board?
I've given you a direct, I guess, response based on what the current subdivision regulations are. I have not... This does not reflect what the subdivision regulations were that were in effect at the time when, I guess, prior approvals were met, so...
Not to put you on the spot, but what would your recommendation look like printed for 8.1 if you would have known what you now know?
I would not be able to tell until I actually see what the verbiage is in the prior subregs to be able to...
I think what we have is a situation where the subdivision went slowed down quite a bit. We improved our subdivision regulations, and this had been approved prior to this improvement, the improvement of our subdivision regulations.
In reviewing the old subdivision regulations, Will, would your engineering report... I guess you already said it would be different. I mean, at this point, do you want to submit that you have no engineer report for 8.1? Because we're reading... I mean, I went off of your engineering report...
Correct.
...in my evaluation of the agenda item.
The engineering report that is in front of you does not reflect accurately what the subdivision regulations were that were in effect at the time this preliminary plat was approved. So if it's the desire of the planning commission to fully review this submittal based on the prior subregs as far as the drainage issue concern and the maintenance and upkeep of the detention pond, then... the detention pond, then we could move to do that. Obviously, not tonight. I would need some time to review it based on those prior subregs.
I guess my questions would be, Don, under the old subdivision regulations, who is responsible for the maintenance document or a maintenance agreement with the city on these common area detention ponds?
The previous subdivision regulations didn't require a maintenance schedule...
Okay.
...for the detention facilities, but that it was to be, the ponds were left to the property owner that purchased whatever lot that, that that detention facility was on. So it would have to be a dedicated easement for that detention facility because it'd have to remain there. Whoever purchased the lot couldn't get rid of it, but it would have to remain there. So the only, the only thing, the only things that, that is in here that Will has stated that was not in the old regulations was the maintenance agreement and the fence. They do have to show that it's the responsibility of whoever owns that lot and that it is in a drainage easement, according to the old subregs.
So lot 14 would have an easement? Has that already been put in place for that detention area?
Yes, ma'am, it's indicated. Actually, it's like the majority of it is on lot 14, and then there would be the remainder. I'm not sure what that lot is to the south or the bottom of lot 14 would be on the next section. But the whole area would be encompassed though by a drainage easement. And it's shown, like I said, the majority of that is shown on lot 14 now. Of course, when they record the next section, which I guess would be section three, then of course, that will show the remainder of that easement there for whatever lot number that would be.
Would you oppose putting a fence around that drainage area?
One of the developers, Mike Latimer?
I'm sorry.
Sir, would you mind coming to the podium?
That's okay.
Well, I was wanting to ask if you would be acceptable to having some kind of a maintenance agreement if it is in fact a common area detention pond with the city that would meet our new specifications?
I probably would, I don't know how that works, that's not my thing, I don't know.
Can you share that with him, Don? Or within a brief?
Well...
How does it read in the new ones?
Well, the maintenance agreement is that you put, there'll be a note on the plat that gives specific how many times grass is cut and how often you go and make sure that the outlet structures is not encumbered with debris and stuff that keeps it from draining properly and things of that nature. It's a schedule that would appear on the plat as such, and who is responsible for doing that maintenance.
So it could read the lot 14 and the lot whoever if the developer was not willing to state himself for maintenance in the future? And that's really why we changed the old restrictions, because that was something that didn't leave in the end the best product for the community and the citizens and the maintenance. A lot of times, that begins to be a city issue of the citizens asking the city to correct something that is in error. We do have two situations that we've done in the last 12 months that's been a concern, thus why we changed the subdivision restriction. So I'm, I'm very strong in asking that if that's something that you would be willing to do with, that does go back to note, should be added to the plat that clearly states who is responsible for all required maintenance and upkeep of the stormwater detention basin located on lot 14 and/or the additional lots in the phase three, as you stated, or the additional phases, such that it operates in accordance with the intended purpose and design.
Does it require a homeowner to do that?
Well, if you, if you state the homeowner, then you will be transferring that in your easement and your deed upon the lot 14 and any other subsequent lots that it attaches to. And that would be a note on the plat which would...
Under the same regulations.
For its intended purpose, let's see, I don't know what the, sorry. "All detention facilities shall provide adequate access for maintenance." So at that point, if you're not wanting access from the homeowner, then you would be then going into, "Maintenance shall be perpetual responsible of the property owner." And maybe getting a copy of this, what the engineer has stated, would be helpful?
No.
And I guess if we're not able to make a motion, we would ask if that's something that you would be willing to do as we work together going forward on this project. I appreciate it. Could they have a copy of this insert here to be able to acknowledge?
I have a copy, I've got a copy, thank you.
The italic part of the paragraph, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, Tony, what's the, what's the topo going to look like on that detention basin?
That is in the, of course, obviously, the lower part of the property.
If you could remember from memory there?
Yeah, it's been a while, but it's, it's at the lower portion of the property, obviously. That was kind of a wooded area there, if I remember. The detention basin is in, if I'm not mistaken, it should be fully in, and, and at least the last I saw it. And, I mean, it's got some slope to it where it is, it's not out in the field anywhere. It's going to be at the back of that lot, lot 14. Of course, a portion of it will be on the lot that will be to the south of it. I don't have a lot number, but the majority of it appears like it will be on lot 14.
So we have a motion and a second with, what I want to say without...
My motion was for approval.
For approval.
Because just as we require people to follow the new subdivision regulations, this is under old subdivision regulations, and I feel like we should honor that. Oh, agree.
Okay.
We are honoring just a request of something that doesn't get left unmaintained in the future, and the city have a huge conversation with the homeowner of who is going to take care of it. And they usually want the city to, because it's unacceptable. Or could be, excuse me.
So is that an amendment to the motion?
We're not able to make the amendment. I made a request, and he said we'd be willing to work on that and put that on the plat for lot 14 and the subsequent lot it applies to. So we're ready to vote.
So, so we're just making a request?
Yes, sir.
That's nothing to do with what we're voting on actually, other than, okay. Okay, so we're going to make a vote for the motion as stated?
Exactly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for cooperation. Item 8.2 is the preliminary site plan for Tiger Imports to build a 3,500 square foot building, excuse me, located at 7107 Juniper Road, map 14 parcel 47.16, 1.47 acres, IG zoning, Tiger Import LLC owner. You have map 14 or map 18? Map 18, excuse me, if I did say that.
Make a motion to approve.
Have any discussion? Nice to see a business in Fairview expanding. Questions or comments? Okay, let's say have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Item 8.3 is the grading plan for the Walmart Spoils site located at 2396 Fairview Boulevard, map 46, EO parcel 82, 3.632 acres, Pearl Ampley owner.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have one recommendation from the tree commission that was discussed during their meeting with Dewald and Associates present there, and want to say for the record that they have done an excellent job with this sense, tree census, and the plan of the erosion control for the site. The tree commission recommends that a condition of approval of the drainage and grading plan for the future development of this site be required to meet the city's tree density worksheet requirements based on an as-built survey that will provide, that will be provided by Dewald and Associates consulting engineer once the work is completed.
Yes, sir, we're in agreement with that.
Do we have all state required permits?
The plans have been submitted to the state of Tennessee for the notice of coverage. I have not received in the mail yet that tracking number, but the state has that, and we should be getting a permit. It would be approved subject to, of course, the state, you know, permit being issued for their notice of coverage under the construction general permit.
Is Mr. Smith available?
Mr. Smith is not here, but with Dewise Contractors is Lance, his general superintendent. If you had a particular question for Dewise Contractors, he is available.
Was there a question of moving dirt and clearing this section over here? Was it 3.62 acres, or was it more than that? I can make a motion to defer until we get the all permits available in any end.
Second.
We have an original motion on the floor to, can we make this, can we add to the original motion contingent on getting those permits? Would you be open to that?
Some information that I've gotten on it is that there's a discrepancy in the 3.62 acres that was agreed upon earlier, and this is something that Mr. Smith had to be verified with. So not having the permits, I think, would be appropriate to defer until we just vote those things straight down.
What should the acres be?
14.
That's not a discrepancy. The question is, the total acreage of the property is 14.37, but the acreage is proposed to be disturbed is much less because we're only going to be filling the portion of the property adjacent to the Walmart site. We are not impacting the entire property. The total acreage is the 14.37, that is correct, and that's what's noted on the submittals to the state that they are approving. So we would ask that you, you know, prove it subject to, consistent with what you do with a T-DOT permit or other state required permits is, you know, what Spotty just did a little while ago, and we would ask respectfully that you approve it subject to that.
So we're talking about 14 acres and not 3 acres?
The total acres of the property is 14.37...
Okay.
...as opposed to the disturbed area, which is only one corner of the property that's going to be filled. The rest of the property, per this plan, is being left alone. I believe there's a subsequent plan coming with a master, you know, master concept plan for some additional, you know, work on the property, but this plan is strictly for the fill coming off of the Walmart site, and this is proposed only for this portion of the property.
Okay.
So that's not a discrepancy, that's just a difference in what it is.
Vice Mayor Johnson, are you, you're one representative, have anything to say for Mr. Lamper?
Well, just on his behalf, and being the former owner of property myself in the current tenant, Mr. Smith has...
Step over, Michael.
Mr. Smith has told us that, in the beginning, that he was going to do the entire property and not just this 3.62 acres that's been presented before you this evening. It was the property owner's request that we wait until the rest of the paperwork gets in so that they know that the whole thing can be done at one time instead of starting something and then the state saying, no, we've decided we're not going to give you a permit, and then you've got three acres of trees destroyed for possibly no reason.
So I'm like, just deferred? My motion is to defer?
We have a motion to defer and a motion, and a second to that original motion. Any other discussion?
What was your first motion?
The first motion was to approve.
You've got to look at that.
That was to approve for discussion, approve for discussion. Yes, sir.
Just to let you know, if you defer it, you will have to take action on the next meeting, one way or the other, or it becomes approved.
Suppose we just delete that from the agenda?
Why would you do that?
No, no, can't do that. Then we're not deferring.
But you've got to take action on it one way or the other. You've got to approve it, disapprove it, or approve it with conditions.
The motion is that we defer it. We have a second.
First motion was approval.
Our first motion was approval, so let's...
You have a second, and you're in discussion, you've got to go through that vote. If he amended the motion, the attorney said what? We have a first motion for approval, we have a second, we're in discussion. We need to vote on that, yes or no?
And if you've got, do you have an amendment to that motion?
An amendment for deferral.
If you do, you have to vote on the amendment first.
Yes, you will vote on the amendment first, then you vote on the approval or disapproval.
Well, if you vote to defer, there won't be any need to vote on the amendment to approve.
Depending on how the vote goes.
Let me ask you a question. If, could Mr. Lamper request that this be dropped at this point?
I think the board is getting into something between the developer and the property owner that we don't need to get into.
Okay, all we have in front of us is a plan...
You have in front of you a plan, you either vote the plan up or you vote the plan down. We don't get into, as this board doesn't get into, any disagreements between the property owner, and all due respect, and all due respect to the developer. If they've got a problem, they need to work that and bring it back to this board. But we don't, we've got a plan before us. You voted up or you voted down. And then if it's voted down, then they come back with whatever they work out, but we don't get into the battle between, potential battle between the property owner and the developer, because if they've got a problem, they'll have to work that out however they work it out. We're not, we're not in that business.
Do you have an agreement on something that would say we're...
No, what we have is the plan.
We have a grading plan for the Spoils site for 3.63 acres, Pearl Ampley owner.
And we have a motion to defer with a second as an amendment to the first motion for approval. So is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I need a vote, all those in favor of deferring the motion as the amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And that negates the first motion?
It does, but as Don said, you'll have to take action on this at the next meeting. Either, either vote it up or vote it down, or it approves itself.
Okay. Does everybody understand what Mr. Cantrell has stated?
At this point, you have a 30-day window. Do you have options of moving that dirt, or is the job expended, expended at this time? Say again?
Item 8.5 is discuss amending the master development plan for Fairview Historic Village, map 69, parcel 62, 3.54 acres, HOD zoning, City of Fairview owner. Anyone here from the Historic Village?
The city owns it.
The city owns it, so we're...
I need to make everyone aware that I'm the vice chairman of the historic commission.
Okay.
And I would like to reserve the right to discuss and vet.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
This is just for discussion only.
Discussion only.
Yeah.
Okay. What are the, we originally had this approved back a few years ago. What changes do they want to do to the plan?
In this future area, there's an amphitheater in this area. It's been brought to be, to ask for a change in zoning to allow the moving of the amphitheater to this area here. But we're in conflict of this detention facility right here if we do that. Not saying that it can't be re-engineered to allow that detention facility to go in a different place. But when you move the amphitheater up here to create a place for, a lawn for people to sit, it was requested that the sidewalk that comes around to the Triangle School would come through this area here, so it would create an open space. Triangle School would come through this area here, so it would create an open space for people to be able to sit on the lawn. And then the other, you've got a farmhouse in this area right here and a barn in this area, they just want to swap the two, put the farmhouse here and then put the barn up there next to the parking lot.
Okay, so when you drive up your driveway to your major parking area in the front, you walk up and the first thing you see is the barn instead of the house? That's what we're proposing, or that's what they're both proposing? Personally, I think that's backwards. Also, I understand this farmer's market is looking at putting some, a structure there or possibly moving that to the Historic Village?
From my understanding, the reasoning for moving the amphitheater was to put it over here beside the parking area so that could be utilized by the farmer's market as well.
The amphitheater?
Yes.
Okay, that will be used, that will be incorporated into the farmer's market, is that true? And amphitheater, is that structure consistent with the other types of architecture that are going to be in the Historic Village?
I haven't seen any building materials or plans for that, so I don't know.
Mr. Anderson, can you, can you help me figure out why they want to change the barn in the house? Is it, can you help us on discussion there?
Um, no.
Okay.
And do we have to ask the historical, the National Historical Registry in changing any zoning or is that directed in the city only?
Well, the zoning is going to stay the same, it's still going to be a HOD, which is a historic overlay district, but when you approve a overlay district, when you bring a master development plan in to be approved, where the buildings are saying that's where they're going to go, that's where they got to go because when you approve the zoning, rezoning application, that overlay becomes the zoning of the property, so they have to build it just like that plan. So to make amendments to the plan, you have to go through the rezoning process to amend that master development plan. So this plan would have to be redrawn by an architect, not architect, an engineer or a surveyor, make those changes, and then accompany a rezoning application to come back to this board, get a recommendation for approval or disapproval to make those changes back to the Board of Commissioners, and then the Board of Commissioners will have to act on the zoning.
So the historical piece is just on the Triangle School? They don't have jurisdiction over the entire parcel?
No.
As a historical?
And I was just asked to put it on for discussion because to go through the rezoning process, we've got to spend money to have somebody to make those changes on the plan.
We're in discussion, folks. If you have any kind of comments, questions, please feel free. I've pretty much said what I thought.
Could you explain in a little more detail where the farmer's market would possibly work?
Where the amphitheater is located? Don, can you point it?
Down here is where the future amphitheater for a future phase is to be located. They want to move this to this area here.
It's more accessible to the road.
It's accessible to the parking area, and so the farmer's market would utilize the amphitheater, but when you put it there, you're in this detention facility. So one thing is, we've got to make sure with an engineer what they're going to do with that detention facility if you move the amphitheater there. The next thing is how you're going to configure your sidewalk, because sidewalk goes around and gives access to these future proposed buildings here and along around to the Triangle School, and the proposal is to bring it this direction to the Triangle School, so you leave out access to these proposed buildings if you do that.
Okay, why is the farmhouse not being considered for the same thought, for the same purpose, for the same ending? And you don't have that issue?
If be-
If that be the conversation, why is the farmhouse not an option? It's closer to all the roads and the parking.
The amphitheater being open, an open, you know, amphitheater, I would say that the farmer's market could utilize that better than a farmhouse that's going to have furniture and-
No, I'm speaking of that being-
Oh, the location.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you meant farmhouse.
This is an identified area of placement, but it's got issues and detention issues. Why would this, I mean, if you got, this is an option, why is this not an option when it doesn't have the problems of the detention? If that's the way you're trying to converse?
I think, I think that would be a fine option in the sidewalk.
And it's next to the amphitheater?
I'm the one who initially drew these plans up, and the sidewalk is just there so it can access, and sidewalk can be readjusted.
So why couldn't the amphitheater and the farmhouse be switched and it be very, very simple as far as the detention issues?
The way they got, it looks to me like the amphitheater would do better down by detention just because it's on a lower elevation. If you move the amphitheater up here, you're looking uphill instead of downhill with the amphitheater.
As long as they can take care of the drainage problems that come in-
Right.
With the rains that we have here, so it's not under two feet of water.
Yeah.
Sometime during the year.
Right.
You're absolutely right.
We have to change the zoning and everything if we just said that was a 24 by 40 structure there? Do we have to put a farmhouse there, do or die? Or can we have a 24 by 40 structure and that be a-
Well, it calls for farmhouse. If it didn't say farmhouse, then I would say, yes, you could.
Can we have a farmhouse and plug amphitheater?
If it could be a 24 by 40 structure.
Just call it a farmhouse.
I mean, if we get an 1829, I mean, an 1829, we can't use this plan anymore? I mean, is that what we're saying?
Now, what's that?
It says 1830 farmhouse. If we don't get an 1830, it's a 1831. We got to rezone and pay an engineer to redraw this?
Technically, yes.
It is a final master plan, and that is a legal document that would be given to the county.
Do we have to have names on buildings? Why can't we make a removal of specific names, cafeteria, barn, church, farmhouse?
But you'd still have, you'd still have to rezonate to make those changes, but-
We're going to have to rezonate regardless of what happens tonight because they want to move something anyway, so that process has got to happen.
Not if this words gets taken off. They may not move nothing, a 24 by 40 structure and nothing being done by the engineer other than the rezoning with name deletions. Right?
You could rezonate just with the names deleted, yeah.
That's my motion.
Okay, explain, explain to me about the rezoning.
We're only discussing.
Oh, I'm in the motion.
Can you tell me what the zone is now and what the rezoning is?
The zoning is HOD, which is Historic Overlay District.
Yes.
Which this is the master development plan-
Okay.
That is set for that property.
Okay.
And has to be developed just as the plan calls for.
And rezoning would make it?
You would have to rezone it if you wanted to amend what's there, you have to make those amendments through the rezoning process.
And rezone it to what?
To whatever. Still be HOD, you'll just be amending the master development plan.
Gotcha. I just wanted that explained.
So even if we kept the names and everything the same and you just moved it, you still have to go back through rezoning?
Yes.
But it's more money and more engineering, it's more changes. The engineer kind of backs up and punts and does a whole process.
The only reason, the only reason they followed that naming scheme is because I drew these plans and I put the names on there. It's not like, anyway.
So, but that's not an engineering bill?
Yeah. Regardless, it's got to go back to the engineer.
Yes.
But he doesn't have to redraw the whole thing and do measurements-
No, just to remove the names.
For deletion of names and a replan presented for approval.
A lot less cost just to remove the name than it would be to redraw the plan.
I'm, my concern is the layout of the property itself with the barn up front in the parking area. I think, I think the farmhouse should be in the front, whether it's in the, where it says Phase 1 in the detention pond area, that is fine, or in its current location, but to drive up to a Historic Village and the first thing you see is the farm, that's not the way they laid out farms back in the day. The house is up front.
But we're speaking of a covered shelter for farmer's market is what's driving this conversation.
Exactly.
For music.
I have no problem with that as long as it meets or it blends in with the village and isn't a sheet metal carport or what, or any other materials.
Trust me, well, I can't say trust me, but that's not going to happen.
I think, I think part of the concept was to make it similar to-
The one in Bellevue.
The stages, like it's in Bellevue, the stages that used to be at the old Opryland.
Yeah.
And that would conform pretty close to what you have before, as far as I can tell.
The overall thought is you drive up into this Historic Village and you see as close to a Historic Village as you can, what people think of.
And, and if you check out Historic Villages, a lot of them have amphitheaters-
Yes.
To be able to perform, do, you know, any-
Yes, plays.
Yes, plays, concerts, stuff like that.
It's city property.
Yes.
And it's a city meeting place, you know, and I'm all for the amphitheater.
Right, that would just bring more, you know, people to this area.
More uses out of it.
Right.
Good discussion.
Anything else on the discussion? All right. We have removed 8.6. Reports and for discussion and information, 9.1, Planning Zones, Zoning Codes Department. Mr. Mavell?
I have nothing.
9.2, City Engineer?
Thank you, Chairman. Just real quick, just a reminder that on my engineering reports that we submit each month, you'll notice that even items that may, you may or may not think would have engineering comments, I'm always going to follow the same, the meeting agenda and identify each agenda item, just for the simple fact of there's not question as to whether or not, well, has, has the engineer looked at it or has he not, or does he need to, or that kind of thing, so I'll continue that practice if it's suitable to everybody else, and other than that, happy spring and enjoy the nice weather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing further than that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Right. Commissioner Elliott?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Mr. Sutter?
Just a couple of things. Don, is it possible to have something a little bit clearer? There's no way I can read it, and I don't know if the, could y'all read what was up on the, everybody's going to like this right here. Can we look into the possibility of doing that?
The, the problem is, you got small files and you're trying to zoom in on them or trying to bring them up, so-
I guess the point I'm trying to make is that's just, that's just not useful at all. If I can't read it, I can't understand it, and the reason we got these big jogging screens up here is for the people in the audience to get, look at what all it is, and there's no way that I'd leave, and I know that you're doing the best that you can, but I'd like somewhere to be able to look into it and see if we can't make it legible.
Let's see, I don't have the files on here.
Get a handicap section. I'm serious, there's, there's a app or whatever it is that you might be able to deal with, but anyway. Secondly, what can we do to avoid the situation like we had tonight as far as something that was started 10 years ago, five years ago, and since then has been a change? There's got to be a way to have a time limit on being able to grandfather something in from the time it's first applied for.
You, you do, and-
Could have denied him whenever he asked for it.
And when he brought, when you brought the planary in for reapproval, y'all approved it under the, reapproved it under the old regulations.
Okay.
You didn't require him to come in compliance with the new regs.
Okay.
So y'all had the authority then and y'all were-
Done it twice.
Yeah, so.
All right, thank you, that's all. That's all I have except for Thursday, it's 12 o'clock. Where are you going to address the 16th?
State of the city.
State of the city?
16th.
The 16th at 12.
At 16th at 12 o'clock. Like anybody to come over, it's going to be at the Pizza Place name?
Spinners.
Pizza Place.
Spinners.
Spinners Restaurant, okay. I'd like to know if anybody come out and hear some good exciting news. That's all I have, thank you.
Can I wait for you?
Commissioner Biata?
Tuesday. I have something for Don, and it's in relation to the Heartland Reserve as far as the detention pond. On our new restrictions, do we allow detention ponds to be on lots like that or?
Well, if it's in a subdivision that has a homeowners association, then any common or any detention facility should be on common ground that is maintained by a homeowners association. The new subdivision regulations are written to, and I believe it's required, that when you have open, open facilities and open areas, that those areas are maintained by a homeowners association. We just don't have anything under the new regulations right now. They was adopted in 2007 and we still have, haven't even tried them out.
That's our sub, new subdivisions under there.
New development.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just kind of echoing Mayor Totti with asking for the maintenance schedule. It just, I think, I don't know if Coles Creek had an issue with it or not, but, you know, you put that on the onus of an individual landowner, and I mean, they don't know, they might hire a company to come and fill it in or, you know, put sod on it and make a yard out of it, so I just wanted to kind of bring that to the attention and ask that question.
The, the problem with the old, older subdivisions where the detention facilities are on private property, homeowners do not maintain them.
Sure.
They grow up and they become wetlands, and we've got several of those over in Castleberry.
Fargo Heights.
And then when something happens, the homeowner wants the city to come in and do something about it, well, they're, they're wetlands and they're protected by the state now, and the city can't do nothing with them either unless we get an A-RAP permit or a permit from, from the state TDAC to allow us to do something to that detention pond. And so it, that was the reason why we had changed the subdivision regulations to require the maintenance, maintenance to be on, on the plats and who was responsible for doing that maintenance and have that schedule because of that scenario there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benson?
Have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson?
Just want to remind everybody to shop in your own city. We've got some great new businesses out here and just, you know, take a look at them.
Mayor Totti?
Well, I would like to footnote, Mr. Biata, me being of knowledge of that and knowing that we have citizens that have complained to the city and have pretty much been on their ear of how does this get fixed, this is a dangerous snake pit, a problem, kids crawled in, dog got lost, whatever, in more than one subdivision, not knowing that we would go to that because when I read it on the engineering report, it was covered in my mind, or I would have not let this come up face value where you didn't realize what I was trying to say was a problem, and that's why we changed to the other subdivision requirements because it was recognized as a problem. So we didn't anticipate it, but the issue of Will being the engineer, I don't know, you know, what timer you put in the recommendations, but that was a rabbit trail which did direct me in a place that I thought we were covered, even knowing he was of possible the old. So that's really a disconnect between Codes Department, engineering, and board. So that's really a disconnect between codes department, engineering, and board that shouldn't have happened. At that point, I don't know how we could have fixed it, but I can see that it, it really is not a healthy thing because it put us in a position. Wherever that needs to go from here, but thank you for highlighting that. Anybody want to comment on my statement?
Just, can I later?
There's got to be, there's got to be a way that we can adjust that for things in the future. Even though it was started and grandfathered in, there's got to be a way for safety and liability purposes that we can change that.
But when you approve the old, and he came in and asked for the extension of the old to be renewed, that was an issue because I know the new subdivision requirements, and I don't know if that's easily done to give the old and new in a bullet point or italicized or a highlight for the board to understand because when they say, sure, you can be in, we love you, we want you to come back, your old stuff's good, that's what we just run into, and there's more stuff that could be run into that may be unaware. And when you ask, when do we stop it? They adopted in '07, this is 2013. We've had a few that have come back and we've been gracious, excited and wanting growth and development of rooftops. So where it comes up is when you have an expired one that comes up again. Unfortunately, the knowledge is now on the table and they may not get the same directive. Or we have new ones coming open. We did have a gentleman on 96 that's under the new restrictions. He's not started, but he's under them. What's he under? That was just a couple of months ago, if you recall, the man on 96 Highway. Same thing, if indeed. Aren't the new restrictions saying that it's considered a critical lot if it's that much of the lot addressed in a detention? It would be an allowable buildable lot even though the building setback may and may not touch the detention?
As long as you've got a viable building envelope, it, it, it doesn't matter.
I didn't study the building envelope, so that might be the thought.
I believe the one on 96 is a PUD, so he would, he's having HOA for his common areas.
Okay, good difference, thank you.
Yeah, but this is, it's just, the way I see it is it's just a way for the developer to pass the hot potato instead of setting it up properly. I mean, a sub, you know, if a detention pond fails, it's more than, you know, I mean, the whole subdivision could, could have issues, so. It's something that we
We need to work on.
We all need to be...
Kyle's Creek came up against it with the, the renewed one, and then his issues of the asphalt came up, the issues of the curbing and guttering came up. So those are things, and again, if we can have the old ones and the new ones, this is the new ones, new stuff. I don't know if you can just bullet point, I don't know how easy that is, but that would be fresh course education right there.
By the first approval.
The contrast between the old and new is pretty significant in, in some areas.
I agree.
Especially when you get in
Believe it or not, I got it on my desk.
Yeah, especially when you get into the conservation subdivision and the walkable subdivision versus just a regular standalone subdivision. The conservation and the walkable Yes.
They are both posted online, the old subdivisions and the new.
Well, not the old ones, the new ones. The, the walkable subdivision and the conservation subdivision requires it to be a PUD, whereas the, just a standalone, straight up subdivision does not require it to be a, a planning development, so.
I understand, okay. The only other thing I have is the Special Olympics. Fairview is honored to host the Special Olympics. It was scheduled for Thursday, the 11th. That has been changed due to a rain date. They have put the Special Olympics that will take place at the field in between the Fairview High School and the middle school for Friday, Friday, the 12th at 7:30 a.m. We are honored to be hosting the Special Olympics, and if you could be a part, please do so. We'd love to see you out. And as Tony was commenting, the Chamber of Commerce is having the State of the City address, and I have been asked to speak, and it is at 12 p.m. at Spinners Restaurant. Everyone is invited. That is all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I add one comment?
Sure.
This is not totally, totally related. But did anyone notice in the news today that Riverwood Road is experiencing a problem over in Cottonwood? There's a sinkhole opening up in Cottonwood, and it has closed Riverwood. The, the county is of course making a comment, but apparently they must have Collier come in, do drilling before TDAC gives approval. And it just made me realize again that we as a city have also had some sinkholes open up. And it, the article left me in a bit of a quandary about what, who would be responsible if we should have a road or, or multiple roads with, with sinkholes underneath?
Will, I'm going to ask you to address, if you recall, on Cumberland Road, Cumberland Drive, what took place even though it didn't touch our street, where and what would have been the steps if it did? If you can give just a briefing on that.
Sure. If a sinkhole did present itself within public right of way, that was inside the city limits, then, then I, my recommendation would be that the city would be responsible for taking appropriate steps. A, to make sure that the area is, is safe immediately. And that may include, you know, stopping passage of vehicular traffic as well as pedestrian traffic if needed. And then B, take the appropriate steps to explore the area that is in question, assess the situation and the damage, potential damage, and then move forward with appropriate steps to remedy the situation. And part of that remedy would all, would include contacting the state for their permit process for basically anytime you're doing work around a sinkhole and the state requires a permit to do that. Now, under emergency situation, they would basically, for lack of a better term, fast track that process and work with the city. And in a matter of a day or two, I would think that they would issue approval to go ahead and conduct work that needed to be done to remedy the situation. But that's the, without getting into specifics, because each one would be different based on how it presented and how big it was and then those types of things. But that's generically kind of the process that would take place. Ultimately, you know, your, your city commission would be, I assume, would hold a, an emergency meeting to, to either approve some kind of emergency contract with a contractor to come in and safely make the area safe and do the, do that work that would be required. So at some point, your city commissioners would be, would need to take some action, so to speak, because you would be spending city money at that point to, to remedy the situation. But that's generally what would take place.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we did give assistance to the place that don't come and, right when that, that one developed, didn't we? Don, didn't we go out there and give some assistance on that sinkhole? I know the fire department was involved in it to a point.
There was a caution tape and a secure until the homeowners spoke to the mitigation. I forget the name of the gentleman who does that.
I know one of the firemen went down on a rope into it to see.
That was an afternoon activity, I don't believe it was a city oriented project.
Ultimately, the, the issue on Cumberland Drive was, was wholly contained within private property, so the city was limited in, in what efforts it could perform in doing that. Certainly empathetic to the property owners, but from a formal standpoint, couldn't really take action on.
Okay, please, I've been, I've been left out once. I have a couple of comments and some thoughts I wanted to give you folks. One, the first is, and they're all related. We are developing our city where we left off in 2007. I've been on the board since 2006, and I remember Don gave a report around that time, 2007, 2008, that there were 25 or 30 subdivisions, and Chairman Vassell at the time mapped those out that had been approved that had not yet been started. Now, I think I heard earlier this evening that everything that has been approved has been approved under the old subdivision regulations and we have, that were prior to 2007. Post 2007, we have not seen any new subdivisions come into the city for preliminary, conceptual preliminary or final approval.
No, sir.
So you folks on this board can take it that anything that you see coming in on subdivisions has already been approved under the old subdivision regulations. So if you look at drainage easements, detention ponds and those type things, you know, we almost need to have a copy of the old specs because that's what they're going to be under. Yes?
Most everything that's out there now, except the ones that have just come through with files. The preliminaries have expired.
Okay, so the files would be the ones that we would have to be looking at.
So before they can proceed with the file, they'll have to come back in and get their preliminaries reapproved. At that time,
Yes.
you can reapprove them under the old regulations, or you're going to say you have to come into compliance with the new regulations. Then they'll have to come, they'll have to go back and redraw whatever necessary that they will have to redraw and resubmit and bring them back for approval.
Right. That's what I was going to say, is that the preliminaries are there, and that's our safety gap to be able to bring them into the new regulations. So this whole situation that we have as a city are, is this turnover of subdivisions coming in. I want to, I want to say that Will, you got caught tonight in a situation that you didn't get prepared for, and you were going under a set of rules that are in place and have been in place for six years. And we have let a couple of subdivisions go under the old regulations as a way to get this development started, that were final, and then we did that. So I don't, I don't find fault at all about the way it went. It's just a human thing that went out. We, Don thought one thing, you thought another, it just happens. And I, I think it's, you know, you just rattled off everything about sinkholes off the top of your head. So I mean, I'm, I've always been very impressed with what you do for the city, and I just want to let that be said. Finally, along that line, the state legislation is going through committee now where if a single-phase subdivision development gets put in place, there is going to be a 10-year limit on change. And a multi-phase subdivision or multi-phase development, there'll be a 15-year limit on subdivision regulation changes. So what we have in place now, if somebody, if this passes and somebody came to us and said, we want to put this in place, they put it in our new subdivision regulations, those will be, if this passes, they will be good for 10 years. And you can take that and think about that and how you feel about that. I personally feel that that is taking away the responsibility and the ability of local planning commissions to govern their own city and does not take into consideration new technologies and the things that are coming on in the building that could be implemented that don't necessarily have to be. So, that being said, that's all I have. I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment.
Second. Thank you.